I'd like to call this meeting of the Elkhorn City Council to order. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, to declare, on behalf of the State of America, and to the Republic of Canada, the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, and universal, for the sake of God's law.
Roll call, please.
Kim Schroeder.
Here.
Peter Harvey.
Here.
Gary Payson Jr. is absent. Ron Dunwoodie is absent. Scott McCory.
Here.
Ken Minow.
Here.
Dan Roberts.
Here.
All right, next is public comment. Do we have anyone here tonight that would like to be heard? Seeing no one, I'll ask again. Would anyone like to be heard for public comment? We will close public comment and move on to the consent agenda, where we have the special council meeting minutes of June 30th, 2025, the Public Safety Committee meeting minutes of July 7th, 2025, and the Municipal Services and Utilities Committee from July 15th, 2025. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda has passed. Next, we have bills payable in the amount of $3,881,503.78. I'll make a motion to pay the bills in that amount.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Peter Harvey.
Yes.
Scott McCory.
Yes.
Ken Minow.
Yes.
Dan Roberts.
Yes.
The bills are paid. Motion passes. Next, report of city officers. For the mayor's report, I really don't have any much, but I do know Chief Christiansen wanted me to mention the Brewers and how I believe they've tied the Cubs in the standings, so they had quite a run.
You think they're going to win 10 straight all year, the rest of the season? Keep it up.
Adam, you're up.
Well, thankfully, my report will not be as contentious, hopefully. Just wanted to remind the council, we have an F and J committee meeting next Monday at 5:00. Talk about the capital improvement plan. We've been working on that, so... And I know Cory's been a big help on that, as well as the city department directors who have submitted their requests. We're also working on the operating budget for next year. That will be presented to council closer to September, but the goal is to have the F and J look at the capital improvement plan next Monday and then hopefully do a preliminary report to the council at the first meeting in August, unless the F and J committee wants more time to, you know, do any changes for that preliminary presentation. And then I just want to just mention that we're doing a lot of work. It's been a lot of engineering work recently in terms of... We... Creekside is getting ready to go, so we're having pre-con meeting with them tomorrow. And then we've got a meeting with Sugar Creek on Wednesday to review their SIP. So it's been, you know, all the developments are now all starting at the same time, which, you know, I guess is a blessing and a curse. But so we're excited about that. And I know Harvest Point is also eager to get going. So it's just been a lot of behind the scenes with those projects. So those are my updates, unless there's any questions from the council.
Okay, thank you. Reports of city boards and community partners. Fire advisory. We have a meeting this Thursday at 6:00 PM at the fire station, Mayor. Okay, thank you, Chief. Library.
Good evening. We've had our initial construction conference with our selected contractor, Progressive Construction Services, and have a preliminary phase plan that covers the timeline of the grant project. Phase one will begin on Tuesday, September 2nd, and the entire project, we're looking at running that till May 14th of 2026. Library plans to be open throughout the majority of this project, with the exception of the HVAC roof unit, which is tentatively scheduled December 1st through about the 21st. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Rec advisory. We've got both Gary and Carl absent tonight, but I'm told that the next Park and Rec Advisory Board meeting is on Wednesday, September 10th, at 5:30 here at City Hall. Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening. In the tourism world, things are moving along and the projected, I don't know if we've seen the room tax from the other, but second quarter should be up some. We're hoping we see a significant jump with activities we've seen in our area. And we're just coming off of a successful Rib Fest, even though we had a little bit of rain that delayed... That shut us down Friday evening. But I think we have to give kudos to our fire department and the police department and the fairgrounds and our school district for the proper emergency plans that we have in place because of the high winds and the tent was only rated for 75 mile an hour and the National Weather Service put out 80,000, so trend or 80 miles per hour. So you were not my friend that night and shut us down, but that's okay. I will take safety over what happened. It was a good evening. We made up for it on Saturday and Sunday, very much so. So we're looking forward to the upcoming things that are on the fairgrounds and the Walworth County Fair and different things. As you all know, we do a lot of advertising, but some of the things that have been changing in our world is influencers. You get social media influencers. Visit Lake Geneva and the region has done some social media influencers, and we have a couple of them recently that were in our area, that were at the Apple Barn, Friends on the Square golfing. We have a couple of them that were just at Alpine Valley, so we're waiting to see how they liked the concert and how those influencings react to us. And we've had a lot of professional photographers be done and videos. So if you have any questions or concerns about what's going on, please let us know, and we're open to any suggestions that we have out there.
Thank you, Chris. Community grant writer.
I have one very promising update for everyone. I received a letter this past week from Mr. Jeffress from the Jeffress Family Foundation. He liked our preliminary proposal for the restoration of the band shell and has invited me, Adam, and Matt to attend their annual board meeting on Wednesday, August 13th, where they'll assess our application in more detail, ask us questions about the community involvement and the engagement with the community in a presentation where they'll decide if they want to partner with us on the capital improvement project. So wish us luck.
Thank you, Katie. Committee reports. The Public Safety Committee. Does somebody have a report on that?
That would be Ron.
I can probably take that one. I think it was most of the items that I believe were discussed, unless I missed it within the minutes, were kind of items related to parking, which are actually on the agenda upcoming, so we'll be talking about those. It was at the corner of Washington and Walworth, as well as Walworth and Wisconsin, and then a little bit of parking off a hidden trail. So we'll be discussing that upcoming. I believe those are the only three items discussed on that committee meeting.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Municipal Services and Utilities.
Yeah, we have a meeting on July 15th at 2:00. And each department gave a report on their vehicle maintenance. And we were pretty happy with that. I think there was a few questions asked, but nothing that they didn't answer well. So, one, one.
Okay.
Adam, you have... No? Okay.
Thank you, Ken. Unfinished business. We've got a possible motion to rescind approval of proposed development agreement between the City of Elkhorn and Belinsky Homes for construction of Harvest Point Villas and condos. Can we get an explanation about why we're rescinding it and then we're coming back with this?
Yeah, so after the last meeting, when we were getting ready to circulate the development agreement for signatures, and again, Harvest Point is eager to get going, we... There was questions about the construction plans. So this project has been obviously in the pipeline for a long time. There's been multiple, you know, SIP amendment of it. And so, you know, it's stretched back from 2022 to obviously this year. And the developer wanted the focus to be on the 2025 plans, but the plans that had been, you know, approved and discussed previously were 2022. And so we wanted to make sure that the current construction plans are at least included in the document, even though, you know, I mean, they're basically the same as the SIP. But so the document, we just added an exhibit for reference so that if there's ever any question as to, you know, what the construction plans are for the project moving forward, they can see that, which is Exhibit E. And then we also tried to flesh out, because there had been so many changes and a lot of the amendments for the SIP in the past would reference other documents, but the documents weren't actually included in there. We thought it'd make it easier just to, hey, let's put all the documents in that same exhibit. So it's not just referencing some, you know, document that we don't actually have, you know, at hand. So it was intended just to provide clarity and documentation for the future. So this was just something we worked out with the developer, so. That's the reason.
So we're looking for a motion to rescind approval. I'll make that motion to rescind approval.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. Then next, we've got discussion of possible decision regarding updated development agreement between the City of Elkhorn and Belinsky Homes for construction of Harvest Point Villas and condos. I think we just had the explanation that we're adding the material to... Motion to approve?
Yep. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have an update from Nate Stephan regarding results of water testing in Centralia Water Treatment Plant Reservoir Rehab Project.
Evening, everyone. It's been a few weeks since I've provided you guys an update as far as what's happened at Centralia. So here we go. So we did some dissolved gas testing back in late June, mid-June. And we saw some results. So what we decided to do was to retest every single well in all of our treatment plants to see if the same results kind of came about or do we have something different in the aquifer to help us determine the decision about the reservoir moving forward. And lo and behold, we found the same gases at all five wells and they're removing the gases at our Lakeland facility, our northeast treatment plant. So we feel really good moving forward with a reservoir project that rehabbing the reservoir and putting the aerator in is going to eliminate that cloudiness. I want to mention that that plant's still obviously offline. If you want to know, like, the dissolved gases included argon, oxygen, nitrogen, carbon dioxide, methane, ethane, and hexane. Very minimal hexane, but it was detected, so it's worth noting that it was there. With all those dissolved gas results, they were presented to the DNR. We sat down with both engineering, myself, and the staff of the DNR to discuss what should we do in the future, you know, while the reservoir's offline. And we talked about the cloudiness, and it's really an aesthetic thing. But obviously, you mentioned words like methane. It's not very appealing, right? Not aesthetically at all. But if there was an issue where we really needed to have water, such as a large fire or emergency or a water main break, we could fire up those wells for emergency, and the DNR would have no issue with that. I'm not saying we're going to go ahead and do that, but if we had a large fire or if we had a water main break, we absolutely would make sure that we didn't get into like a negative pressure situation. So where are we? Last time I was here, he approved me to go to KLM, work with KLM, work on plans and specs and design. We sat down this weekend, or actually on Friday afternoon, they submitted 80% of plans and specs for us to review. So we're in the process of that right now. The timeline here is to get you a bid advertisement to approve at the August 5th council meeting. And then we can advertise from August 6th through August 26th. And then what we would do from there is bring back the lowest bid for you guys to hopefully approve on September 2nd for the contractors start complete work. The biggest goal of the whole deal would be to have the reservoir up and running 100% complete by November 1st. If you do the math, it's about seven weeks, which I don't think it's going to... I don't think it's going to happen. But what can happen? A new... Old roof can be taken out. The reservoir building can be cleaned. A new roof installed. The aerator work, which we were thinking about doing in-house, it's just there's too many logistics. It's just easier to do it in the bid, and I don't have to ask you for money 100 different times. So just do it in the bid, and it's done easy, simple. And then what they would do is try and put at a bare minimum zinc coating. So we sat down with the DNR again today with KLM, myself, both, to discuss all this, to make sure all parties are on the same page. Because everyone knows we do need this reservoir to go online when the Lakeland facility goes offline. And the DNR would be okay with zinc primer coating being in there. And then what they would do is they'd come back in the spring or fall, depending when Lakeland was online, to complete the coating and the blasting, which we would just take it offline for probably four to six weeks while they would blast and finish coating the reservoir. So we're leaving the contract open for the final date of completion to be October 31st of 2026. If all the weather goes well and they get all their materials, maybe they can pull this off in seven weeks. But we have to play it safe, because life happens, as we know. But yeah, that's pretty much my update about this Centralia reservoir. If you guys got any questions, feel free. That's very easy.
You good? Good, yeah. Thanks, Nate.
Have a great day.
We'll move on to new business. First item is a discussion of possible decision regarding proposed resolution 2025-24, a resolution approving development agreement with and authorizing the issuance of up to $15,914,704 of taxable increment revenue bonds of the City of Elkhorn, Wisconsin to Newman Development.
So this is something we've been working on now for probably a year and a half, I think, in terms of when Newman first approached us. And, you know, the council, you guys approved the creation of TID District Number 5. And so as part of that project, you know, this would be the development agreement that would authorize the increment to the developer. It would be 75% of the increment that's created. So again, just as a reminder, pretty much Newman gets only... Basically, Newman gets 75% of what they create. So the reality is, you know, the city's not... You know, we're not putting money up front. The risk is all on the developer. It's a pay-as-you-go situation. The current project as proposed is 149 homes, and the value is about $67 million, I think, is the estimate. Approximately, I know it's changed a little bit because the number of houses has gone down. But... And so they would have the ability to get up to $15 million and, you know, that either get $15 million, they max out, or the time, you know, the TID closes. There's a couple of different situations, whatever happens earliest. This agreement has been reviewed and was drafted by Corals and Brady, who obviously they're our bond counsel, so this is what they specialize in. They're the ones that drafted the development agreement for Creekside. We've definitely had a lot of, you know, reviews of it. Newman has looked at it as well, and it's gone back and forth. So at this point, you know, we're ready for council's approval. And this agreement also does deal with not just the financial side of it, but does deal with all the, you know, public improvements and all the dirt, if you will, as they like to say. So if you do have any questions, unfortunately, Corals and Brady couldn't be here tonight, but they are available by phone if you have any questions about it, so. And also Brian Lindgren, President of Newman, is here tonight in case you have any questions about the development or, you know, developers' understanding or anything.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-24.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Scott McCory.
Yes.
Peter Harvey.
Yes.
Ken Minow.
Yes.
Dan Roberts.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have a discussion of possible decision regarding the condition of the property at 504 West Court Street. Who wants to start that?
I'll start it, but thankfully, we've got Allison here, as well as Chief Christiansen to talk about it. So I know Alderman Roberts had a concern from constituents and wanted to get an update on this. There's a little bit of confusion as far as what has happened thus far as to whether a raise order had been issued or not, in part because the, you know, code enforcement update that gets sent out did show there was a raise order. And getting clarification from Allison again today, it wasn't so much that there was a formal raise order issued as much as they noticed a non-compliance had been issued to the developer... Sorry, developer. To the property owner, telling them that they either needed to fix the building or tear it down. So that's what had been sent. They didn't comply. A citation was issued by the police department and is presently before the court, although I know, I think Allison's going to have an update tonight on that. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Allison's here to talk about the process in terms of if the city were to move forward with issuing a raise order, what that would entail. And then, you know, Chief, I don't know if you have any additional comments about it as well. And then obviously, I mean, Alderman Roberts, if I don't know if you want to say anything about it, but...
Yes, thank you. So Adam is correct that we did receive some citizen complaints quite a long while ago regarding this property and the condition that it was in. And then I believe Chief Christiansen and his department fielded some complaints as well. So we did send a non-compliance notice to the property owners, and not a formal raise order, but trying to possibly achieve a raise without actually filing the formal paperwork that's a little bit more costly and time-consuming. So we went off of our own code of ordinances and stated that because they had a dilapidated building and an abandoned building, that we would like them to either make the repairs necessary to bring it into compliance with our ordinances or have the property torn down and the building removed from the site. They have not done that. I know that... I believe they have a property manager who is sometimes at the property, who has re-boarded it up as people have entered the premises illegally and that sort of thing. But other than that, nothing has really happened with the building. So after their deadline passed, we did go ahead and issue a municipal citation. I did reach out to the municipal court clerk today. However, she was not in the office, so I wasn't able to obtain an update on where that citation is at in the court process, whether they pled guilty, not guilty, or paid the citation. I'm not aware at this time.
So I guess my question would be, what do we do? Or let's start with, have you had any contact with them at all?
No, they have not reached out to me at all. And so one of the things that Adam and I had talked about is the next step is if the city wanted to take formal action would be to file a raise order or a raise or repair order, which is a more formal document that would be drafted, likely reviewed by the city attorney. And then it would be signed, notarized. The building inspector would probably have to get involved to do some sort of assessment of the building, write a report. And then we would have that document notarized and recorded at the Walworth County Register of Deeds. We would have it either published in the paper and/or the property owner would need to be personally served. He is out of state, so we would have to hire a nationwide service company to do a personal service to that property owner. We typically give 30 days for that property owner to take action. I do put a little bit of buffer in the raise notice because it might take some time to get the individual served. But then at that point, once they are served, the 30-day clock starts. They have 30 days to take action on the property. And if they do not within that 30 days, that then gives the city the right to step in after the fact and follow the formal process to take in bids or RFPs for demolition. And then the city would be able to have the building demoed, the site graded and returned to just green space. And then all of that would go back on to the tax bill as a special assessment. The only downside is the city fits the bill upfront. So that would be extremely costly, and you may not see any money back for a very long time, if ever.
Is the tax part... Are they in arrears now?
What was that?
For the taxes? Are they behind on their taxes?
They are, yes.
Is it just a year, or is it...
I believe it's one year, 2024.
And I know, Allison, you said one of your concerns was about asbestos and that part of it. I think you said that, you said, was it Beloit that had recently dealt with this? South Beloit with the abandoned hotel? And I think you said that they spent $2 million tearing it down. Is that what you said?
Yes, that's correct. So I have worked in two other communities that have done more recent demolitions of more extensive, large buildings or commercial buildings similar to this property. If any of you are familiar with the City of South Beloit, they just tore down the Garden Hotels on the corner there. That was almost a $2 million project due to all of the environmental remediation that needed to be done on-site. Another building was torn down in the Village of Darien, a brick commercial building in their downtown district. That was well over $200,000.
Did you guys... I know you were going to call, or I don't know if Chief, whether either one of you got an update on the court hearing as to whether there's any decision or...
I did not. Unfortunately, the court clerk was not available today.
Chief, do you have anything to add in regard to this building?
Well, obviously, we're talking about the former Lakeland School property or building itself, is what it's more affectionately known as. We've had issues for a considerable period of time as far as it being kind of a, I guess I'll call it a track of nuisance for children to get into and do what kids do inside of buildings like this. We have, I would say, a sound working relationship with the property manager as far as they are responsive to our concerns as far as boarding or the like. So I don't think we've had... I think it's been re-boarded now, and I believe the roof access that the children had been using to get inside has since been taking away that ability. So recently, we have not had any children inside that we know of. And the only thing I would say, going back to possible environmental issues and maybe those that live in the area would know better, but if my memory serves me correct, I believe after this was purchased, I want to say Ballis Ray Environmental was out and did do some remediation work or at least started the project. So we might be able to reach out to a local provider to get better information as far as whether they did any of the asbestos removal. Because again, I thought that they were onsite and doing that earlier, but some of the neighbors might know better, too.
They did already tear like half the building down, right? So they would have had...
They did. They did tear a portion of it down, correct.
So they would have had to done a study at that time to see what was in the building? How would it be affected?
I don't know for sure, but...
That's true. I'm just saying, I wouldn't make that assumption.
But we could certainly reach out to Ballis Ray to see if they would share that information with us.
Yeah.
I guess my take, Mayor, is since we were unable to reach the municipal court clerk today, it was out of the office, I'd like to kind of know where we stand. Did they pay the fine? Did they plead guilty? Did they say, heck, no, I'm going to trial, see you in court before we really go any further? That's the way I feel. Never mind, I would assume a couple of business days before we could get some kind of, you know, stand there.
Can I ask, who was the citation actually issued to? Because I just, I have an updated list from the court clerk that I'm looking at right now. So if it's made it past that initial appearance stage.
I want to say we attempted to issue to the actual owner rather than the company name.
Was that Mr. Wang? W-A-N-G?
Very well, could be.
Because there were two owners listed, a company, a holdings company, and then D-A-Q-I-A-N Wang was the other name.
Okay. I think that's correct.
Okay.
From New York. From New York, I believe.
I don't see that on my pre-trial list from the court. So it gets to my pre-trial list if they've appeared and pled not guilty, if they haven't been defaulted, or if they haven't just paid the ticket.
So that would lead me to believe it was a June court date that they, a default judgment was most likely entered if it's not gone to pre-trial then.
Yeah, either that or they just paid it and moved past it. If they paid it, then we need to start the process over.
And I would like to mention from a raise order perspective, obviously, a notice to correct is something to get their attention, but they could ignore it, which is what they did. From a raise order perspective, it does give you certain statutory authorities. The raise order would be issued by your building inspector. Obviously, the council holds the purse strings on that, so the building inspector isn't going to go and enter into a contract to have the property raised. That would be something the council ultimately would have to decide. Certainly, the raise order might get their attention more so and at least get them to the table for conversations. You would certainly have authority to extend that raise order, the building inspector would, to allow some time to try to work out details to get them to the table to address it. And then ultimately, whether you wanted to authorize, you know, a contract for that demolition would ultimately be a later council decision.
All right. So I would think that we'd want to wait till our next meeting till we get the Notice of Court Clerk, so we know what happened there. And if we can find out from, you just said Ballistery, on what the conditions are in the building before we do anything else at this point.
So we're looking to postpone this issue.
Postpone.
It was years in the making. I think we can wait a few more weeks.
Yeah.
I have a question for Katie. In the meantime, would you be able to at least take a peripheral look at what, if any, grants might be out there to take it to the ground or assist in taking it to the ground or anything like that that might offset the costs?
Absolutely.
If you could work on that in the background?
Yep.
Thank you. Are we looking, Allison, to get them to a point where all the entrances and exits are boarded up? Is that like a short-term goal, a long-term goal? Are we already at the, this thing is like literally crumbling brick by brick and it needs to come down? I guess I haven't been out there since we talked about it years ago, becoming a memory care unit of home for, we talked about that and that never came to fruition for reasons I don't remember. You remember this, Kenny?
Yeah, that was one of them.
Yeah, anyway, I guess I don't know what, I don't know, I don't know what the status is right now, like.
My understanding, the ceiling over the pool is falling.
Okay.
Yeah, I have not been.
That's what I was told from the maintenance guys over there.
Okay. Yeah, I have not been inside the building actually. From an exterior, exterior perspective, it isn't as if it's crumbling like it could cave in at any, any given moment. I think in the short term, we've done everything we can. As Chief Christensen mentioned, he has a fairly good relationship with the property management company, and the PD has reached out to them on several different occasions, asking them to re-secure areas and get it so that individuals are not coming and going from the property. So they have at least been attentive to that. They're cutting the grass and that sort of thing. But I think now, at this point, we're looking ahead into the future at a long-term solution for this site.
Yeah, I can tell you in the past years, and I recognize some of the people out here, how many times that the planning commission, I never met the supposable owner. He always had a lady come and represent him.
I remember that.
Yeah, and I don't know how many, I'm going to say six, eight, you know, maybe more times that, you know, they were going to do this or do that. And as you look back on it, I think they were just postponing as we moved along. It's pretty evident of that right now.
Okay, we table it for now and bring it back into the, at the next meeting?
We need a motion.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? All right. Motion passes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Allison. Next, we have a discussion of possible decision regarding payment application number one from J. H. Hassinger for the Lakeland Water Treatment Plant HMO rehab project in the amount of $30,167.25.
I would move to approve.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Scott.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Scott McCory?
Yes.
Peter Harvey?
Yes.
Dan Roberts?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we've got a discussion of possible decision regarding proposed conditional use permit for Varney Automotive for auto repair and sales at 325 East Court Street.
I make a motion to approve that. It was in front of planning commission and it was all good.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can I, Matt?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe there might have been some conditions that were tied to that, that the planning commission approved it based on. I don't have those conditions with me. I don't know if you can verify that.
They're listed on the conditional use permit.
Okay, so I don't know if you want that to be considered as a part of the motion or not.
The, yeah, conditions, I would want that a part of the motion, conditions. That's the way, that's, that's the way we moved it here, but I didn't think we had to stay here. If we're approving, if we're approving, what they moved here, right?
Right. That makes sense.
Yes, either one would be appropriate if you're conditional use permit, what's in the file, what's being recommended for approval. Belt and suspenders, you can always say motion to approve, subject to the recommended conditions by planning commission.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we've got a discussion of possible decision regarding proposed conditional use permit for the Glass Garage for restaurant and event venue at 100 Clark Street.
What happened on this one is there was a conditional use permit for that restaurant, but conditional use goes under the owner or the person that's in charge of the property. And since then, I don't know if it was Scott or not, but now there's different people that are in charge. So the conditional use now, they had to get in their name.
So there were no new conditions, just a change of ownership?
Right, there's conditions there, you know, but yeah, it's basically the change of ownership.
Okay. That makes sense.
Make a motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we've got a discussion of possible decision regarding traffic visibility concerned at the intersection of East Walworth Street and South Washington.
I could take these again unless someone from the committee wants to go through them. Again, we talked, there was a resident that brought some concerns forth, and it was initially talked about at a way previous public safety committee, meeting, maybe a month or so ago. So staff to look at it. And the concerns were having to, you know, do a double stop at these intersections and understanding that the buildings are right up against the right-of-way. We're kind of limited as far as what we can do. So we took, we dialed into those with our traffic engineer and provided some exhibits, some proposals to the committee, and they chose to eliminate the parking here and in front of the, eliminate one parking stall in front of the post office, adding a handicap accessible parking stall here, which would be parallel parking, as well as removing this handicap parking and turning it into a regular stall so that we're kind of offsetting the one that we're adding. Understand that parking is tight already. So for that specific, there's other items that we can talk about later, but for that specific item, that's what was proposed and that the committee made a motion to approve. If there's others that want to chime in.
Any discussion or, I guess we're looking for a motion to approve these changes.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we've got a discussion of possible decision regarding no parking along, whoops, wait a minute, no discussion of possible decision regarding handicapped accessible parking stalls at the intersection of Walworth and Wisconsin.
So certainly, we had talked about this location, and we had discussed possibly eliminating a handicapped parking stall here, again, kind of offsetting one that we're looking to add in front of someplace else. And the decision was to leave this one as handicap accessible parking and also add one here, which would end up taking up two standard parking stalls in order to have the adjacent access aisle. So that was approved at the committee level.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any, any, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Then we've got a discussion of possible decision regarding no parking along West Hidden Trail near the intersection of North Church Street on both sides of West Hidden Trail to include the private entrance to the apartment complex on the south side.
Yeah, this was, again, also discussed at the public safety committee meeting that was held last week. This was a concern that was voiced by a couple of residents that came to a council meeting prior, you know, maybe a month or so ago. And again, we met about it and we talked about it. I know Ken has, Ken Minell, Alden, Ken Minell has received some comments and the concerns about it. So we looked at the rules of the road and some possible, you know, persistence and guidelines to try to meet as close to a standard as provided in the guidance. And at this time, what was approved by the committee was to have no parking on either side of the entrance, either side of both entrances, 15 feet away from the curb radius return. So that would be 15 feet from basically this point back. We would have a sign that says no parking from here to another sign that would be over here between the sides would be no parking.
There's a fire here right there, too, isn't there?
Uh, let me jump down there and take a look.
Right down the corner.
Right there.
Yeah, you couldn't park there.
And this, this is going back, we just got the hand right now. They parked right up to the end there, and when you pull out, you couldn't see what was coming up the street.
Right. And it was a built-in hatchet, like you said, because it's the only ingress and egress for that community.
For that driveway.
For that driveway. Right. I make a motion to approve?
Good. Real quick, I think we're knocking just the south side out.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what he said. Yeah.
Okay. I thought the agenda said both sides, so.
Oh, it did?
I think it did, but.
South side only.
South side.
Would that amend?
West, south, I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we've got a presentation by Thomas Gardner, who's a partner in Gardner, Cook, Weisberg, and Rona. I hope I said those.
Did pretty well.
Fairly close. Anyway, thank you for being here.
How do I plug in here?
Matt, Matt can.
At the other table.
If you'd like to sit at the desk here, you.
Whoever one you prefer, where we like, oh, okay. I think I had your presentation too, so we'll try this and.
Just got to do one more thing on my hand and then. You'll be able to take control of it. So it's just going to show what's ever on your screen, mirror what's ever on your screen.
Okay, I appreciate everybody allowing me.
You need to press the button. Has a little person on it?
How's that?
Nope. Come on, Matt.
How about this?
Nope.
How about now?
Nope.
There you go.
There we go.
Okay, you can hear it?
I can hear you, but I don't know if the mic's picking you up, but I can hear you fine. Okay.
Okay.
Let her rip.
Okay. So thanks for allowing me to present to you. I'm Tom Gardner. We have a law firm. Office is in Lake Geneva and a couple other places. I'm involved in a case in South Carolina. And as counsel would understand, this case began as multi-district litigation. There was litigation throughout the country and it all got consolidated in South Carolina. And the case involves PFAS. These are firefighting foam-type chemicals that were one of the many kind of miracle-type chemicals that came about to help firefighters, and you see them in different types of areas. But it turned out they weren't miracles. They did great at putting out fires, but they also have leached into water systems. And they've leached into water systems throughout the entire country. So our case is a national lawsuit. I'm involved in the Wisconsin portion of the lawsuit for municipalities. And I'm also involved in Illinois' portion relating to municipalities. You'll hear about many class action cases where there'll be a consumer class action, and you can send in something and they'll give you a coupon to get a reduction in price or something like that. This class action has the same kind of basis in that a lot of people were harmed. In this case, a lot of municipalities were harmed and their residents were harmed. But it's entirely different than those cases because of the scale of the case. There's 20-something defendants in this case. They tend to be manufacturers, and the scope is huge. We are now at the groundwater stage of this litigation. There's other things that are forthcoming. There's wastewater treatment, there's lawsuits involving airports where this foam was used. But at this first stage, we are dealing with groundwater. Now, there's an important distinction to make between what this case is about and what it's not about. What it's not about is your drinking water. Your drinking water can be 100% pure, it can be perfect, your filtration system could have worked wonderfully. And we are not suggesting that the PFAS in Elkhorn or in any of the towns that we represent is present in the drinking water. That's not what this is about. What it's about is the infiltration of the chemical into the groundwater. So you can meet the requirements that the EPA puts out, that you may enforce through your public works person as to the quality of your drinking water and still qualify for the settlement. In fact, that is generally how it works. The drinking water is fine, it's just that the groundwater, the raw water, has the presence of PFAS. Now, the second part about that is that the level of the chemical is incredibly small. The EPA has a requirement of four parts per trillion. For this settlement, it's even lower. It's two parts per trillion. That means that you would have just one part, it'd be like having a drop of PFAS in two Olympic-sized swimming pools. That's enough to qualify you. So when I mention that this case is different than other cases, the reason it's different is because of the players involved here. The case that, there's an initial settlement, and the initial settlement is with 3M and with DuPont. The initial settlement is $14.6 billion. Your town is one of the towns that qualifies for a part of that. At least you can, the doors are open to see if you qualify. And as I mentioned, the distinction, the distinction is that in this case, you generally, if we looked on an average, we would be looking at something like $50 a resident. So you. So you're looking at potentially, depending on flow rates and things like that, potentially it'd be $500,000 on average to Elkhorn. I'm not saying that's the case here because there are things that we have to do to determine the amount, but that would be an average. There's some towns that have had massive amounts, even as small towns, 5,000 resident-type towns getting millions of dollars. But that depends on the particulars of the case. So my point in that is, does it make sense to look at this as a, as a vehicle to provide some extra funds to your town? It does. And does it make sense to do this in terms of just knowing your groundwater situation? It does in that respect too. So, so when we look at this case, what would happen is, it's a contingent fee type case. We, we, myself and another firm you'll see on here, Stag Louisa, are involved in the case. And so our contingent fee is the usual one-third type contingent fee. That's not really what goes to us because in this type of litigation, there's a portion that goes, that is required from the court, to the court to administer the settlement. And that's about 8% or so. We also pay for the tests that are incurred here. So if it turns out that you don't qualify because you aren't at even two parts per trillion, then we, the testing costs, et cetera. And there's some, some minimal participation that your town, public work or the waste, or the water treatment folks have to do in terms of some readings that we, we need, some samples that we need to submit to our, the lab that does this evaluation-type work. And then there are other factors that come into play as well in terms of additional money that you can receive or the flow rates come into play, some technical information comes into play. So, anyway, let's go to, we'll go to the PowerPoint here. And the $14 billion relates to the initial settlements. There'll be more settlements down the way, but 3M is the largest player here. And by the way, you know, I mentioned that it was multi-district litigation. To do this settlement, 3M and DuPont required that it be turned into a class action so that they could cut off future, future claims. They didn't want other cases down the road. If, if you don't participate, you are in the class, if you want to be in the class, we can represent you in that regard. If you decline to pursue the case, then you are done. It's not like if something comes up later and you say, oh my God, now we have seven parts per trillion, it's too late. So, so the history of PFAS, the chief may know some of this about PFAS. My dad was a firefighter. He had a little experience with it. The, the chemical causes harm. There are a number of poor health effects here that have been proven over time to take place. This litigation is actually called the AFFF, A triple F litigation, out in South Carolina. And, and you can see some of the areas that I talked about before with the firefighters, training centers, large landowners, personal injury at the individual level, but we're dealing with the, the groundwater systems at this point. If you have a wastewater system, we can deal with that as well. The EPA limit here, I talked about four parts per trillion. That's the EPA limit, not the limit for this case. And the drinking water systems here that qualify for this initial settlement in the case, there are, there's sampling, there's different funds available. So as I mentioned, sometimes there are larger amounts based on specific needs. Some systems have to be improved to prevent future problems. I suspect that may not be the case in Elkhorn. And of course, I mentioned statute limitations type issues, statute of repos, which means that you can delay beyond the statute of limitations based on certain notices and regulatory standards. Issues that you might run into in a lawsuit, as counsel would know, are eliminated by having the settlement in this case. And there's baseline testifying, testing, there's qualifying expenditures, and there, our job is to try to maximize the city's recovery. The deadlines here are approaching. The testing claims form, so that's where we would need the sample at the various wells in town, has a deadline of January 1st, but we're trying to move the information through faster so that we don't have a bottleneck and a rush at the end. So with lots of towns that we're representing, we're getting that information in now and we're beginning the process to determine qualification, how to maximize recoveries, et cetera. And then there's other testing requirements and action funds. And there's also under that last category, the supplemental fund claims form. That is, as long as you proceed in this program, you are eligible for future funds. And the deadline, the cutoff for those future funds is the end of December 2030. So, and then the what's next, there's additional defendants in this case, there'd be some trials potentially on the remaining portion of the case and resolution of other claims. But right now, we're just dealing with 3M and DuPont. So I brought a resolution with me, should you be interested in doing that. We're in litigation, so I'm, I'm a little, I guess cautious on what I say in public session about the case in terms of value, evaluation of the case, strategic decisions, et cetera. I'm happy to share any information in a closed session with you relating to this litigation. When I was approached on this case, I've done plenty of cases, but this case appealed to me on kind of a personal level as well. I was a village trustee for nine years. I'm on the plan commission at Lynn, the town of Lynn. My brother is the mayor of a town. And it seems to me that this is kind of a no-lose proposition. If it turns out we do testing or, and it comes back that you have nothing in your groundwater of qualifying PFAS, you don't have even two parts per trillion, which is very unusual, I would say, of our clients, they almost always qualify. But should that happen, there, you will receive nothing and you will pay nothing. Shouldn't be that you qualify for it, though, you can receive a lot with no risk really. So that's the way I would analyze it as a former elected official. And it seems to me, when I looked at this initially, that because of the likelihood of success on it, it makes sense from not just our point of view as the lawyers involved, but the municipalities' point of view as well. So I, I hope I didn't take up too much time, but I wanted to give you at least a thorough presentation relating to this.
Thank you. Are you, are you able to take questions if anybody?
I can take questions, yeah. If there's a question that goes beyond what I'm comfortable with, I'll let you know.
I just have a question for you. When you talk about the average recovery is $50 per resident, is that prior to the removal, you know, prior, is that net of the legal recovery contingency portion or is that?
No, that would be a gross number.
Okay, all right.
Anyone else? Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Nate also had a question, I think.
Hi. Sure. Just curious, so what data, or someone would suggest that we would be a good candidate?
Oh, I see, okay. Yeah, it, it was not based on anything to do with your water supply, for starters. It was, what the lawyers did was they decided what systems would qualify throughout the country. And generally, there had to be, the municipality or the water system had to serve at least 3,500 people. So that would be the standard in Wisconsin. So you may have no PFAS.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I have just a couple of questions. Mayor? Thank you. City Attorney's Office, what other local municipalities or Wiscon, or municipalities around the state of Wisconsin or in the Midwest do you represent? If you can tell us.
Well, there are, there are lots of, I, I've done this in phases, right? So I did the Illinois phase, it's still ongoing, but I did the Illinois phase first. I'm not sure exactly how many we represent there, but there's a lot of towns that we represent or are considering representing. I would think there are about 15 right now, but there are more that are coming on board. It depends on the, when people put things on the agendas. So I, I would anticipate it would maybe be double or triple that amount in Illinois. In Wisconsin, we just started doing this in the last maybe three weeks or so. So I didn't really keep track. Right now, it's only a few, I would say, in Wisconsin at this stage. But I, I anticipate that there's more. Now, one thing I didn't mention is that my co-counsel in this case is on the control committee, basically, for the class action. So we are having, there will be hundreds of municipalities that will represent nationwide.
Okay. One other question for you. In your engagement agreement sample, do you front-load the legal fees out of initial recoveries or do you take your legal fees as the recoveries come in?
Only as the recoveries come in.
So you're just like a, another law firm where if, if, if we don't win the case, we don't pay you anything?
Yes, just like the TV is.
Okay. So there's no, there's no risk to the city, like you said. You pay for the test, we don't have any PSAs per trillion, we have nothing, lost, nothing gained.
Right.
But if we have eight parts per trillion or whatever, that $50 per resident goes way up.
It would go up. Flow rates matter too, but yes.
Yeah.
Didn't, didn't you say we pay for the testing?
No. No, we, we front the testing cost. This, all the city has to do is collect some samples. So we front the cost. If the, if the testing, if we get a recovery from you, we get reimbursed on the cost, but we front the cost and if there's nothing, that's our problem.
Is, is the testing, because this is a public water system, as a part of the, the multi-district litigation piece, is the testing, though, reimbursable to you because they're already named as a part of a public water drinking system, even if the testing is negative?
No. No, we would not get reimbursed for our testing, with respect to Elkhorn.
Anyone else? Are you the only firm that would represent municipalities in Wisconsin?
No. No, there are other law firms in this litigation. You can imagine, it's a big litigation. So I, I know that there's one other firm in Wisconsin that's active. I'm not sure that there are others beyond that.
So is your plan, oversimplification, is your plan, your firm, to go to literally everybody who has at least 3,500 residents in Wisconsin and decide, come join us?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just on full transparency.
No, that's exactly the plan.
Yeah. You've got a big number. I mean, you've already got a $14 billion offer. I mean, I totally get that.
Yeah, and also...
Why not make that 15 or 18 or 20 billion?
And you can imagine, when you have nationwide class action like this, it's, it's complicated. So...
Okay. All right.
One other question. Is it your intention for your engagement agreement to be broader than the water systems? I know you mentioned, you know, what you anticipate, the next potential areas, areas of claims and settlements, wastewater, airports. Is your intention to have your engagement agreement be broader than just the water utility matter?
I don't think that we paired it that way, but hang on one second here.
We don't have an airport.
I understand.
He just mentioned several categories of potential claimants.
Let's see, I think, I, I don't, I'm sorry, off the top of my head, I'm, I'm blanking out on that answer. And I thought I had brought that with me, but apparently not. So I can do it either way. We can limit it to just the groundwater. If there's wastewater, it's the same sort of thing. If you end up qualifying for that, if you have a wastewater treatment plant, we'd be happy to represent you on that as well.
Those line of cases, they're not there yet, right?
No. No, there, there's been, there was an initial, this is really phase two on these settlements. Phase one dealt with municipalities that had tested and already had PFAS problems. Stage two is Elkhorn and other communities like yours where the testing hasn't occurred at the groundwater level.
Thank you.
What's the timeline for your firm to reach a settlement or go to trial or whatever? I mean, are we talking five years, 50 years, 25 years? I mean, you must, you must have some number.
Well, I, yeah, I, I think that for this portion of the settlement, this will occur based on the timeframe that I had put up before you.
So 2026?
Well, no, it's a, it's a slower process than that. So the submissions go in 2026, but let me just turn to that.
I think you said that your, your most far-reaching deadline was January of 2030.
Right, right. But, so you, we have forms that are being submitted through August of 2026. So there's a whole process that you can imagine. My expectation is that it would be like 2027, late, or 2028. That would probably be the territory. The supplemental fund claims that run through the end of the year in 2030, those are claims that you can still make to supplement, but it wouldn't, those don't delay the payouts that would occur. But, you know, this is a case where if you look it up in the federal court, hundreds and hundreds of entries of court filings, right? So, so the judge, judges don't necessarily look to be monitoring these multi-district litigation slash class action cases. So it will depend on the judge in large part.
Right, so the class has already been established and the water utility is already in that class, so there wouldn't be individual, at least with respect to DuPont and 3M individual lawsuits that would be filed on behalf of the municipality if you were to engage this firm?
I would anticipate that portions of this case will be going on in 2033. But not for Elkhorn.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next, we're going to adjourn into closed session. I'll read my statements and then we'll get a motion. The common counsel may entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851G conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. This is a discussion regarding retaining the law firm of Gardner, Cook, Weisberg, and Rona to represent the city in a potential PFAS class action litigation. And then the next item is the common counsel may entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851F to consider financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific... of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where 19.851B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. And this is a discussion regarding correspondence received by a city employee. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Make the motion.
Second. Got a motion in a second.
Roll call, please.
Peter Harvey?
Yes.
Scum Corin?
Yes.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Dan Roberts?
Yes.
Motion passes. Close session. We will be reconvening into open session. All right, we're back in open session. And I believe we have a motion.
Yes, I'll make a motion to table the item regarding the engagement letter potentially until such time as the city staff and the city attorney can review the matter a little further and report back to the council at a future meeting.
Second. We got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And on our second item, there'll be no action taken. A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.